Join me when you say you're ready.
When you're ready. Thank you. Six o'clock.
At six.
If I can call the meeting to order. Mr. Demmett, would you like to lead us to the bridge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the principle which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business, roll call of members.
Ron Bacon.
Here.
Pat Brooks. Rob Demmett.
Here.
Brad Overton.
Here.
Richard Reed.
Present.
Greg Richmond.
Here.
Chris Westine.
Here.
First order of business is approval of the minutes.
I found two corrections that you all got notice of. I'll make a motion to approve them as corrected.
Second.
Okay, motion is approved as amended by Greg, second by Rob. All in favor? carries six zero. Let's business, additional appropriations. Mr. Steve.
Good evening. Steve Rowley, Economic Development. I think you guys all know what the Warbucks program is. I'm here tonight for additional appropriation out of our edit funds to continue the successful program. It is our shop local by Warwick small business program. We've been very successful. We have some tools, as you guys know, for big businesses, TIF, tax abatement, stuff like this. We created this small community card program, which has been an overwhelming hit with residents, our small businesses, our mom and pop businesses, and our Main Street businesses. It continues to be a big success. We have over eighty-four Warwick County businesses of all types in the program currently, and this is basically so that we can have a holiday 2025 holiday promotion and kick this program also into 2026. Other than that, I sent you guys a summary. I'll keep it short for you, but I'm happy to talk about it or answer any questions that you have.
Anyone have any questions? Steve?
It's a great program.
I make a motion to approve the additional.
Second.
Motion by Greg, second by Rick. And it's really, as a farmer, small business owner, I would have really appreciated it when that was coming. It's really good. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries six zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve.
Additional appropriations, corner. Ms. Inright?
Alyssa Inright, Warwick County Corner. I'm here to ask for more appropriations for my morgue fee line item. As you're all aware, at the beginning of the year, without notice, we did get a tripling of those fees from the Vandenberg County Morgue. So obviously, my budget was set up this year for that $100 amount for morgue fees, and it's increased to 300. So, and a $50 day per diem. So I am here because I need more in that line item.
Will the, you think the 4,000 is what you need now, or is that?
That is enough maybe to get me. Unfortunately, I was missed on the last meeting, and so that was the amount I had previously asked for. But we have seen three roadway fatalities this month, a couple of infant losses. So this month has not been a good gauge of what the rest of the year is going to look like. So I may, towards the very end of the year, be back for a little bit more. But I'm hoping maybe I could squeeze something from somewhere else if it does get to that point at the very end of the year.
Okay. Any questions?
Alyssa, I thought I had read that it had increased to 400 per autopsy, but you just said three. Is that?
It's three, and then there's a $50 a day. Yeah.
I'm sorry. There's a what?
$50 a day.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, depending, I have negotiated myself out of a lot of those fees, and I'm only taking decedents that need an autopsy. I'm no longer taking unclaimed people or anything like that. These are just strictly associated with autopsies, so.
And just to clarify, these are the fees associated at the morgue charges just to have the decedent there?
Yeah.
Not for the autopsy itself?
Thank you. Yeah.
So just a clarification, the autopsy is a whole different other line item, much higher than that. This is just the fee that Vandenberg County is charging originally.
Yeah, just to be in their facility.
Just to be in, use their facility. Originally, when that original facility was built, I was on staff then and in the corner, that was supposed to be a regional morgue, and the $100 was to make sure that everyone around the region would use it and could use it inexpensively and do that. But now they've, they've gotten busy enough and they're, they have their new facility, I assume.
Yes, and I, most of us that are still using their facility, which are not a lot, a lot of people, the upgrade and the fee has caused a lot of other counties to go elsewhere. But the, the assumption and the feeling that we are, all are getting is that when this new morgue is opened, that we will be, they will push us out even further.
They're working that direction.
Yes, that seems to be the, the feeling from everybody that still haven't used their facility, so.
Just to let you know. Okay.
Yeah, just FYI.
Okay, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second by Rick.
Thank you, guys.
By Greg. More discussion? All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Thank you, Alyssa. Uh, see, Superior Court, one business, per diem petted jury, 10,000.
Hi, Ellen Sprinkle, Court Reporter, Superior One, on behalf of Judge Kristi Hamby Wyver. We've had some trials recently, and our fund's been depleted, and the $10,000 will, I believe, cover us for the rest of the year with what we have in the trials we, we have scheduled.
I think that's scheduled.
That's the hope.
Okay. Any questions? Any motion?
Make a motion to appropriate the $10,000.
Motion by Rob.
Second.
I'll second it.
Second by Chris. More discussion? All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Clerk, business, election equipment, $58,965. Be appropriated on a rainy day.
Mike Wilson, Warwick County Clerk. Good evening, gentlemen. We're here to ask for the appropriation for the $58,965 for new pole pads. I believe you got a sheet that says why we need the new equipment. One of the main reasons for the pole pad is it cannot take any more updates from how the software will not be able to be updated.
The current software.
On the current machine that we have.
Right.
So we're in version five. The new one's version eleven.
Okay. Questions? So... What was, I guess, can you, I think we discussed this, the budget time, perhaps, did we as well?
Yes. So.
Can you just run us back through that again?
The budget.
Okay.
The election machines that we need applying are in the rainy day budget, and it's budgeted out for three years. But we need to come for the fourth year. I negotiated a contract with Microvote to spread that payment out for four years instead of three. So there's two different items here.
Yeah, so the pole pads are in addition to the 159.
Yes.
And so we have this again next year for another pole pad, or will this take care of us?
Your pole pad should, I mean, we're at version five. We've not changed the pole pads probably for ten to 12 years. So this will be an updated machine. You should get technology brand, so you should be good for six, seven years.
Okay.
So you say the existing pole pads are 20 years old, is that right?
No, that's, that's the machine.
Okay, gotcha. Gotcha. This is the separate little pad, the iPad kind of.
Right.
Need a motion? Motion. Motion to approve the additional.
I'll second it.
Motion by Greg, second by Chris. Okay, more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries six zero.
So this is the pole pad, and then what the voting machines, do we want to talk about that?
Right now, it is in the budget for 2026.
Right.
For, like, forward.
Correct. It's for 2025, 2026, 2027.
Correct.
But we need that additional amount for 2028.
Right, right. They'll.
So we just.
They'll approve that. You just turn it in each year at budget time.
So I'm okay to order the voting machines too at this point, because it's in our budget.
Yeah, it's in the budget, yeah.
And then I have those contracts signed. The commissioners have entered into this already. Okay.
Should be fine.
Thanks, sir.
Item number six, Sheriff Business, additional appropriation, J O Utilities. Sheriff Wilder?
Sheriff Mike Wilder, Wake County Sheriff's Office. This is utilities, paid utilities out there at our sheriff's office. I think I mentioned at the last council meeting, I believe I sent with this request, kind of comparing last year's utility bills to this year's utility bills, I believe, didn't I? Yeah, okay. But as you can see, there also has been a race, a rate increase through Center Point and Boom Bell, I think, just kicked in also in October. So we believe this will get us through the end of the year, and we're also moving money within line items to hopefully cover some of the utilities out there, so.
Okay. Any questions? Any motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Rick, second.
Second.
Second by Rob. Okay, all in favor? Motion carries six zero.
And I think briefly, talking to Crystal, I think, at this moment, we're just gonna, I sent you guys the commissary report that I said I would send monthly instead of quarterly, so I sent that. I would just entertain any questions if any, I think I got you. August and September is because of the way the meetings fell, but is there any questions or anything? Also, you can always come out, as I said, see those books.
I have a question.
Yes.
There was a line item for $94.60 for Bob Barker. Is the price right?
Usually, the price is right.
Couldn't resist. And if you're not my age, you don't know who Bob Barker is, probably.
No questions, no. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Superior Court Two, business, per diem petted, per diem petted jury, and Paul Perconsel.
Ladies and gentlemen, Judge of Warwick, Superior Court Number Two, we're coming back for additional appropriation for jury and counsel. We've had to call five juries this year. We've run out of jury money with respect to juror fees, and we've had at least six evaluations for competency, which have depleted our funds. So we are asking for an additional 5,000 to the petted jury. We do have at least two jury draws left on the calendar for the year. We have no money left there, and we're asking for additional $10,000 because we've used it up in the competency evaluations. And interpreter fees, I don't know if you've ever tried to find a Mandarin Chinese interpreter, but ours came from Bix in Tennessee. She was quite expensive. So we've depleted those funds and need more to continue to function towards the end of the year.
Okay. Motion approved. Motion by Greg.
Second.
Second by Rick. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item eight, Parks and Recreation, other services. There's Ben.
Ben Lab, Parks Department. I think you guys all got the estimate for the work. It's a total of 12 trees. We cut down the trees we can ourselves, but these are just trees that are too large, or either they're too large or they're too close to buildings or lines or something. Answer any questions you got?
You say the 14.6 is for 12 trees?
Yeah.
So that's, from what I've heard recently, that's a pretty good price.
It's a really good price.
Mr. Richmond can retaste that.
I'll add to that, too. We do all the cleanup. They just dropped the trees, and we cleaned it all up.
And you cleaned it up.
Yeah, if they cleaned up a mess, it'd be at least double that.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Rob. Second.
I'll second it.
My Chris, any more discussion?
I'll just comment, a comment that Ben, thank you for, you sent pictures to me. I really appreciate that. I had called Ben to get some clarification on this, and he sent pictures of each tree that needs to come down.
Yeah.
And I have them on my phone. A bit of one wants to see them, but.
Yeah, like I said, we do the ones we can, but these are just.
Yeah.
Too big or too close to stuff, so.
So thank you. Okay, all in favor? Motion carries six zero. Okay, Commissioner Business, 9A, additional appropriation of opioid unrestricted.
Good evening. Debbie Bennett, Steersman County Administrator. First item is opioid unrestricted funds. Asking for $100,000 from the unrestricted funds to put towards the opioid grants program. I sent you where we stand currently on the program from the restricted funds. We're at a balance of $72,233. Currently, I have five applications waiting to be awarded and two that I haven't got to look at yet. The ones I'm waiting to be awarded is Warwick County Rec, Rick Hutter's, $25,000, St. John the Baptist School, $25,000, Safe Haven, $25,000, Anquetown Fire, 24274, and Elberfeld Fire, $15,610.53, which makes a total of $118,010.53. And we only have $72,233 left in the restricted fund right now to be able to spend towards those. So I'm asking to use some of the unrestricted funds for the program.
Debbie, what's the acronym NGS?
That's the New York Girl Softball Field, or the program, not the field.
So is that just like opioid prevention use for the softball?
Yes, they're doing training for the coaches and staff in order to get them, have them more aware of children that may be troubled. And they're also putting dollars aside for scholarships for kids that can't afford to be in the softball league for some of the underprivileged kids that can't pay the fees.
Thanks. Any other questions? Okay. Need a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion by Greg. Second.
My second.
Second by Rob. Any more discussion, questions? All in favor? Motion carries six zero.
Okay, the next, other commissioners' fund, 0068. Are we going to do these individually? Are we going to do them all at one time? How do you want to do them?
Let's do them individually, since we have contractual services and we really don't know.
I did send information prior to the meeting. The first is $55,000 for contractual services. As of today, in contracts, there's $12,699.42. I'm holding three contracts right now that were approved by the commissioners but not signed because we didn't have enough funding to award those. One is for Keller Schrader in the amount of $24,630, and that is for computer maintenance. The next is Baker Tilly, and that is a contract for $25,000 to look at the potential funding sources for the potential new highway garage. And the last is $53,000 to Marastream for additional environmental work at the highway garage that's being required by IDIM.
$5,300?
$5,300, sorry, yeah. And I also included in the funding approximately $5,250 per month for September, October, November, and December to pay Dr. Maltby at Animal Control. That's his average contract. That's for the RX vaccines and for his services per month. So all of that came to $55,000, however, now the balance is down to $12,000, or $75,000. And I was considering at the time, we had twenty-some thousand in contracts, that we'd only need 55, but we're probably going to need more than that now. That the balance has gone down to $12,699.42. So I'll more than likely be back.
So Debbie, that Baker Tilly, is that, could that not have been paid out of the GEO buns, or GEO buns, GEO bond? Since it was for the highway garage?
The highway garage isn't in the GEO bond.
Oh, that's right. That's the, okay, thanks. Thanks. The, you said how much per month for Dr. Maltby?
I mean, it's averaging about $52.50 is what I took from the last 16 months, and then averaged them what we've been, some months are higher and some months are lower, and he gets a quarterly bonus for some of the vaccines he does. So that raises his invoice just a little bit higher every quarter as well.
And this is mostly vaccines and checking on the animals?
Yeah, that's all it is.
It's not spam neutering?
He, most of that is being done by Warwick. Not Humane Society, but Warwick Vet, I was trying to think, Veterinary Services. He does some, but very little.
Okay.
I did send you some samples of his bills in the email, just randomly. And I did talk to him today, and he's staying up with me when he's coming in and how much he's charging that day and what the RX amounts are also as he comes in.
Okay. Any other questions? Any motion?
I guess a question. So three of them have not, the things haven't been done. So what has not, contracts that have not been executed that we do not have to pay at this time? Or they all have been?
The contracts have not been executed. They've only been approved. I didn't allow them to execute them because we didn't have the money to pay for them.
Okay.
The contracts that you see listed, that's Keller Schrader, who does monthly computer maintenance. The Baker Tilly one for, it says up to $25,000 for the financial analysis of the new highway garage. And Marastream, which is $5,300, and that's for additional environmental work at the existing highway garage that IDIM is having, is requiring be done. And then Dr. Maltby is under contract. But I estimated his monthly fee and added all those together, so it was $75,000. We had 20 at the time I put in the request. Now we're down to $12,699, so the 55 won't cover all of it.
I'm just, I'm just kind of looking at priorities. You know, the computer services will be a priority. Dr. Malt may be a priority. And then, then the stuff for the highway garage, I could wait a little bit until we can really see what kind of money. That's why I was just, just kind of looking at doing priorities, so.
And I don't think all of these are going to be billed out this year.
Right.
So some will carry into next year.
In my opinion, I, I would like to do something, and we need to do the computer services and, and Dr. Malt being in communication. That needs to be done. Maybe the stuff in the highway garage, we could table that for another month or two and see, see how things go on by end of year finances.
You mean for Baker Tilly?
Yeah, for Baker Tilly, yeah, that's what I'm, Baker Tilly.
Okay, that's an environmental contract.
You want to make a motion that effect, Rob?
Um, I thought we may have a little more discussion, see if anybody's agreeing, but if not, I can make a motion.
$30,000 instead of 55, then, putting the 25 out.
Yeah. I'd make a motion to do $30,000, and that's excluding Baker Tilly and the advanced environmental work.
No, I thought.
Marastream. What?
I thought you were including the environmental work. Yeah, that's something that I don't.
Okay, yeah, all right, that's right. I'm sorry.
Including Baker Tilly.
All right, just excluding the Baker Tilly.
Yeah.
Sorry. Write that down, Christine.
Okay, motion by Rob to approve $30,000.
Let me ask, how does that, what effect does that have, since the contracts have been approved by the commissioners, you said, right? And so, you know, what happens next?
Approved on funding. They're approved.
Contingent upon funding. I know there was talk about adding that clause into the, all the contracts.
It's not in the contract. That's just the vote. It's not in the contract. That's just the motion that was made.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, I need a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? Motion carries six zero. Okay, the others?
Next is legal, legal notices. As of today, in legal notices, we had $548. Amount expended today is $4,429.23, and that is for Animal Control. It's been all Commissioners' legal notices. You might make it through, but I just felt more comfortable having some because the legal notices are going up quite a bit when they come in.
This is the newspaper ads Jeff created.
Well, it's the legal ads, yeah.
Motion to approve. The legal notices, $1,000. Motion by Brad.
I'll second.
Second by Rob. Okay. All in favor? Six zero.
Next is the postage. Okay, as of today, we have $765.14 in postage. We started with $400. I've already transferred $2,000 to help pay postage. And the higher cost of that are shipping for Animal Control, and we have to ship the heads. And it's pretty costly to ship those overnight, and that seems to have driven that price up quite a bit.
Ship them?
The heads of the animals to the state.
Heads, I didn't hear that.
Quite literally, yeah.
And it goes by weight, so, and ask you overnight. So it's, it's driven that postage up quite a bit.
Yeah. Motion to approve the $400 for postage. Motion by Brad.
I'll second.
Second by Rob. All in favor? Okay, six zero.
Last under Commissioners is Communication, $10,000. Current balance in Communication is a negative $2,204.1. We're holding that invoice because we don't have enough money to pay it. If you remember, you gave us $36,000 a few months, or, I don't know, maybe five or six months back, and, and we split that into cell phones and Communication, 18 each. And now we, we are overdrawn again in Communications, so.
Did we get the cellphone?
Cell phones are getting under good shape.
So this is not the cellphone?
No, it's not. And I'm not going to take any of your cell phones. This is actual Communications.
Communication lines, okay.
Yep. Landlines, broadband.
Right.
Midwest telecommunications. I got the whole list if anybody wants it.
Okay. Motion to approve the $10,000. Motion by Brad to approve.
I'll second.
$10,000. Second by Rob. All in favor? Motion carries six zero.
Okay, now we're moving to the courthouse, which is 1162. First, of course, is Utilities. We have $123.63 in Utilities right now, scraping by through this month. So we're averaging about $22,000 a month out of Utilities, and that's not including Animal Control because we're taking that out of their own line item. But the utility bills are outrageous. That's all I can tell you. We have three and a half months yet to go, so I'm asking for that to try at least get us through hopefully a month.
Coming into the winter months.
Yeah, I didn't know it was going to go down that lobby. The Judicial Center's was $13,000 this month from Center Point along. So I don't know if that'll even get me through.
Yeah.
A month. At the time I put it in, we had more money.
The judge's attorney, AOC, down.
Debbie, has there been any discussion, I know Rob was going to make him a joke there, but has there been any discussion about, you know, centralizing control over the thermostats back? So I know, like, the offices have independent control. I thought the system was set up where we could.
I think that's in the evenings, I believe.
Well, I mean, I.
You have to have Terry, maybe. I don't know.
I thought at one point in time, there was a plan to try to control and regulate the temperatures throughout the courthouses.
If there was, I'm not sure. I have not heard from it.
Is that not the case? Don't we have that?
Systems in this building and in the Judicial Center are centrally regulated. We control probably. At the end of the day, there's a lot of, a lot of folks that are cold.
Okay, I'll put you on speakerphone in a minute.
Judges have recommended set points that we leave them at, and that does not always happen.
But I mean, could you guys use those set points and lock those in? So if they say to put them at 73 degrees for the entire time and not, you know, one office decides to turn to 68?
Think of the number 70, 72, whatever, and you can, you can move it up. Set the parameters, move it up two, move it up four, move it down two, move it down four, so that they've got a little leeway. But there's, there's calls every day.
Does each office?
Terry, would you state your name? You didn't do that many walks up here. Make it official.
Oh, thank you, Terry. Mr. Flippa.
Does each office have a thermostat in it?
That I don't, I don't think so.
There's a reason why I think part of the problem is, is like on the west side, all those windows, they get warm. And the other side might not be so warm, and then there's a discrepancy in the temperature. That's something to think about. Y'all can maybe work out.
Yeah. I can get you guys an answer when Brad is back. He knows what those set points are.
Oh, so there is no, like, each individual department can't control their own thermostat setting?
For example, in my office, I can move it up, I believe, four degrees above the set point, four degrees below the set point. I can adjust the fan speed, but that's it. I can't even turn it on or off.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve. Motion by Brad.
That's just the utilities, right?
Utilities.
Correct, sorry.
$10,000.
I'll second.
Second by Rob. All in favor? She carries six zero.
Okay, next is Buildings, $5,000. Buildings currently sits at $261.91. We've spent to date $17,332.9. I did go back through to see what some of the costs were, and I did notice that at the beginning of the year when I wasn't doing the bills, there are some things in here that probably shouldn't have been paid out of it. But I don't have money to transfer it to, to get it right. So the only thing I know is to put, to get more money back into Buildings again, so we can have that to spend.
But are you spending it on what?
Pardon me?
To spend on what?
We put in weather strippings. We painted. We have, did frame extensions, key identifiers, breakers, fasteners, painting, tape and spackling. Mold, mold floor, whatever that is, disc flap, cement. Cushion grips, pressure grips, gluing wire. I mean, Brad could tell you more what all this is. I just paid the bill.
Okay.
We will try not to spend that much, but I can.
So it's really building maintenance? I mean, that's, okay.
Anything to motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Rob. Second.
I'll second.
Second by Brad. All in favor? Six zero. Grounds and parking.
We have $6.97 in grounds and parking. We had $1,000 at the beginning of the year, and I'm looking to put another $1,000 because we spent $1,700 so far out of that fund. I had to transfer to get money in there.
One comment about grounds and parking. The house that is next to our parking lot over there, some, you know, the fence was knocked down. Have you all thought anything about putting a rail up there?
I'm sorry. I don't understand what you're talking about.
The parking lot, our county parking lot.
Oh, here, okay.
Over here.
I didn't know which one.
Yeah, the fence got knocked down, and just wondered if we thought about putting a rail up.
Boarding Anne's house.
That's what I was going to say, Anne Rans.
Terry Philippi, fourth County Commissioner. We had a concrete wall bid, which is specifically what she asked for me, but back since it was a brick wall. I don't recall the price on that, but we can get you that. It was, it was pretty expensive.
Okay.
The cones are upright. It doesn't need to be fixed though.
Cones won't stop anybody.
Everybody's got to be careful.
So Debbie, is this for, like, salt or, like, coming up for the winter? Or what is this? I mean, would we just not be able to spend? I don't understand what we're, like, for the parking, are we buying? What's that?
It's for parking and grounds. That might be, that's part of it right there that we did. There are some things at the Animal Control as well that need to be done on the parking and the grounds, and it's coming out of here as well.
Grounds is in, like, in mowing and rock?
Well, and there was recently a pole knocked over in mowing that we're going to have to put back up and replace, an electric pole. So, yes, I consider that grounds and parking, yes. Does that make sense?
It does.
I've got a list if you want to look. I brought them with me.
Okay, need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
By Chris. All in favor? Six zero.
And the next I put in for EMA business, but the Commissioners tabled that item at their meeting, so I just wanted to take.
No, 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 no.
Oh?
No.
Okay.
Okay, Matt?
Yes.
Okay, I have Matt on the phone. I think he's driving back from Gulf Shores. He has some information for you that he would like to talk to you about.
Thank you guys for taking this while I'm coming back. Following the recent chemical fires, I just wanted to let everyone know I prioritized ensuring that we implemented a comprehensive mass notification system in collaboration with Sheriff Wilder and Chief Cruz. We believe we've identified a highly suitable solution by choosing the vendor OCV who developed the Sheriff's App. That vendor is on FEMA's approved list, which ensures compliance and reliability. Additionally, this partnership that we will have not only offers cost savings for the county, but also enhances collaborations with our Sheriff's Department. And providing their sergeants, dispatchers, my deputy director, and myself with valuable training, I went in smokes needed. To ensure proper training and rules, the Sheriff, Chief Cruz, and I will work together to develop SOPs and updated policies to align with FEMA's strict guidelines for this IPAS. I'm seeking for your support for approval of the budget of $1,995, which covers a three-year period with annual renews. I've discussed payment options with Mike, our contact at OCV, who confirms that we can either pay the $1,995, which I've let Crystal know annually, or we can do full three-year amount of the $5,985 upfront. Furthermore, the coordination with Mike at OCV and the Sheriff Wilder, we can incorporate an EMA tab into the Sheriff's App, strengthening our inter-agency collaboration and improving service toward County residents at no additional cost. But also, I just want to take the time to say thank you to you guys for listening and also Sheriff Wilder for his support and the strong partnership. And thank you guys for the consideration and allowing us to move forward with this because our county does need a mass notification system.
Motion to approve.
Which one?
$19.95 that was asked for.
The, the motion, Matt, is to approve the $19.95 annually.
Okay, thank you. I will get with Sheriff Wilder tomorrow. We can work out the details. I appreciate all of you guys. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Matt.
Second.
Motion by Brad. Second by Rick. I have a comment. Okay. Call it.
I did speak with Sheriff Wilder and Sheriff, if you don't mind.
Yeah. Is this the system that you were explaining to me a little bit where it's kind of an add-on to your existing system? Am I right?
Sheriff Mike Wilder, it's, it's not really an add-on to our system. Luckily, that company is a, is a partner with FEMA, like you said. It's basically IPAS will be able to go through. It's kind of the alert that you get on your, we, EMA or dispatch or sergeant can go in and do a map and draw an area. We can do specific areas. It's not people where they volunteered. They will get this. It only go to cell phones, but we can draw areas. So even if a person's from Terre Haute, happens to be at the Newburgh Ballfields, we draw an area around that and send out an alert. They will receive it. But because of the OCV, which is what the Sheriff's App is, they have basically an interface that we can do that through.
Okay.
So this, then it goes through the state system.
Okay. And so people don't have to opt into this. It goes by that GEO fence?
Right. And it won't call in lines or anything. This will just call cell phones and things like that. But if you, you know, visiting an area, someone's here that would hit their, you know, your phone and stuff. So this is me and Matt, as Matt, you know, described, we're going to partner together with this. He would be able to have access to it through our app. And then dispatch and even our road sergeants would be able to, or anybody that we give authority to would be able to do this. The good thing about this one, too, is that you do, as he said, have to go through training, so you can't just send this out, hey, there's dogs running loose. You know, it, this is their standards because it's done through the federal government. So it won't, you won't just get, you know, a bunch of random calls. It would have to be for something serious and hit the guidelines to send this message out. I did send up today that contract for the, that $19.95 for the County Commissioner's attorney to review to, so they can try to approve that at their next meeting also, since they have to sign all agreements and contracts.
Mike, Sheriff, I can't help but just, you said dogs running loose, and the acronym is IPAS, so.
We won't be using it for our. So, yeah.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Uh, thanks.
Any more discussion? Motion by Brad, second by Rick for the $19.95. All in favor? She carries six zero. Okay, next.
If you would like, since I know you want to talk about 11F separately, so if you want to read all of the other ones and, and vote on all of the other ones pulling 11F out.
Leave 11F out.
Yeah, they're, all the others have been, have been checked.
Okay. Okay. Appropriations, 11A, rainy day or survey or missed appropriation for equipment. This was the warranty part of the equipment that we did the last month, and it was $18,980. We were aware of that, that it was going to come this month to do that. 11B, sheriff reimbursement for motorized vehicle, $7,725. 11C, health handbook policy, location data manager, $1,940. Salary ordinance, health data manager, two-week vacation, sellback, $1,936.77. 11D, reimbursement emergency transfer, adult probation circuit benefits, $3,000. Substitute court person, $5,000. Perf, $1,200. Drug screen supplies, $3,000. Travel expenses, $1,680. 11E, salary ordinance, Superior Court, vacation sellback, court reporter, two-week vacation sellback, $2,020.92. Court reporter vacation sell, sellback, $2,067.8. Skipping 11F, going to 11G, prosecutor transfer, transfer from copy paper, $1,670 to printing, $1,670. Okay, any questions? Need a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Brad. Second by Greg. Okay, all in favor? She carries six zero. Okay, now, excuse me, going back to 11F, additional appropriation, rainy day fund, legal services. I'd like to, our attorney, Mr. Greg Meyer, to begin discussion on that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bacon. There have been four applications submitted for reimbursement of legal expenses and fees incurred by county officers and employees related to the defense of a criminal act, criminal actions that were filed against them by the state of Indiana. The first that was submitted is by Terry Philippi. The amount is $73,096.85. And that is, that was for his defense of three criminal charges. There were two class six felonies. One was perjury, the other was official misconduct, and then one misdemeanor, which was false, false informing.
false informing. That case was originally filed in February of last year. It wasn't concluded until September of this year. There was a trial. One of the three charges was dismissed by the judge on a motion for judgment on the evidence after the state had submitted their case in chief. The other two charges were not guilty on, on those charges. So all three charges were found in, in favor of Mr. Philippi. There was a bench trial. Bob Canada was the, Robert Canada was the attorney for Mr. Philippi. And he's the one who submit, or he, his charges are the charges that Mr. Philippi is asking to be reimbursed for. The second was Dan Saylor. His request is for forty thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ten cents. The charges filed against him were a felony of official misconduct, a felony of obstruction of justice, and a misdemeanor of false informing. That was also filed in February of last year and was concluded on, in August of this year when the state filed motions to dismiss and the judge granted those motions. Mr. Saylor was represented by James Voiles and Jennifer Lukemeyer, who have submitted, or whose fees he is asking to be reimbursed for. The third was by Marlon Wisight. The amount was eighty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. There were four charges filed against Mr. Wisight. Convert, two conversion charges, one official misconduct, which is a class six felony, and one forgery charge, which is also a class six felony. This was originally, this case was originally filed in June of last year. It was concluded in September, just last month. Again, the state filed a motion to dismiss and the judge granted that motion. Anthony Long is the attorney who represented Mr. Wisight. The last one is Robert Johnson, Jr. The amount he is requesting is forty thousand dollars. He was charged with official misconduct, which was a class six felony, obstruction of justice, a class six felony, and false informing, a misdemeanor. His case was originally filed in February of last year. It was disposed of in August of this year when the state filed a motion to dismiss and the judge granted that motion. Dennis Brinkmeyer was his attorney. All of these requests for reimbursement of those fees are based upon the Indiana Code, section thirty-six, one, seventeen, three, which provides that an officer or employee of a county unit who is charged with a crime relating to an act that was within the scope of the official duties of that employer or employee, I'm sorry, that officer or employee may apply to the fiscal body for reimbursement of reasonable and customarily charged expenses incurred in the officer's or employee's defense against those charges if all charges have been dismissed or the officer or employee has been found not guilty of all charges. This section goes on to say that the fiscal body shall reimburse the officer or employee for reasonable and customary charged expenses as determined by the fiscal body incurred in the officer's and employee's defense against those charges if all charges have been dismissed or if the employee or officer has been found not guilty of all charges. So if, I always like to come up with elements. What are the elements of this section? And the first one is that the county employee or officer has to be charged with a crime. The act that he's charged with has to be within the scope of his official duties. And if he is then either found not guilty or the charges are dismissed, he can, number four, file for reimbursement. And the reimbursement must be for the reasonable and customarily charged expenses relating to his defense. These four individuals were charged with crimes. The cases pended for over a year and they are asking for reimbursement of those expenses. All of the charges were either dismissed or had not guilty findings by the judge. So if there are any questions, it'll be happening. Oh, one other thing. There was a question at one point about whether reimbursement required proof of payment that these employees had paid the amounts that they were asking for reimbursement. And first of all, incurring a financial obligation would be sufficient to request reimbursement. We don't necessarily have to pay if you've incurred the financial obligation. But secondly, this, earlier today, we received letters from Mr. Long, Mr. Canada, Mr. Brinkmeyer, and then an email from Mr. Voile's office indicating that all of the expenses that are asking to be reimbursed have been paid to those respective offices by the governmental employee or officer.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion?
So I got one question to start with. Does it matter that it was a civil or a criminal charge as far as the reimbursement?
The statute says it has to be, the employee or officer has to be charged with a crime or an infraction. So this does not relate to any civil charges, not charges, but civil claims.
Okay, that's, I was just trying to draw the distinction between the two. If there is a distinction for that code.
And do you think these four defendants have official duties related to this?
It appeared from the pleadings that were filed, the, what the state filed against these four individuals were related to their official duties from the charges, from the charges that were filed.
I think that's basically going and saying that they, they were trying to block their testimonies or lying or taking money from the, so that, that would not be part of the official duties that they officially should be doing.
Well, if they're found guilty, they're not entitled to this reimbursement. So your, your sort of, your question sort of presumes that they done, had done what they were charged with, but they were found not guilty or the cases were dismissed on all of these. If they had not been, if they had been found guilty or pled guilty, they would not be entitled to reimbursement.
I think the case that you're stating has to do more with going after someone from the other party on that kind of discrimination on, and not, not something that is legally not right that they've done.
Again, I guess that whole question presumes that what they did was, was a crime and they were found not guilty. Charges were dismissed. So I guess I come from the standpoint that if they, if they were found not guilty or if those charges were dismissed, they are not guilty for those char, of those charges. You might disagree with what the judge found in each of those situations, but that was the official finding by the court.
So could I paraphrase that just for my own? So basically, if you accused me of doing something, okay, and I'm found not guilty of doing that, then that really, in the eyes of the law, never happened. I never did any of those things. I mean, that's basically, isn't that really what you're saying? That event like didn't occur, so to speak, and I?
Well, under the language of this statute, yes. If you're found not guilty or if the charges are dismissed, then you're entitled. It says shall reimburse.
Right, but I'm just saying, so basically you're just, I mean, that, since they were found not guilty, then that didn't happen, period. I mean, it wasn't, you know, if somebody accused me of murder, I didn't guilty of murder. I mean, then I can't, you know, you can't try to say that I murdered someone or that what I was put into, why I went to court for ever happened. I mean, it basically didn't happen then in the eyes of the law.
Well, three of these defendants had their charges dismissed on motion of the state. So there wasn't actually a trial, wasn't a finding of not guilty. It was the judge granting the motion that the state filed to dismiss.
So I guess then my next question is, could these, even though these were dismissed, could they be charged again with these or is that double jeopardy? I'm just playing TV. I mean, my legal understanding is limited, but is that a?
I know that one of the, I don't know if I can find it very quickly, but I know that one of the charges, one of the motions was dismissal without prejudice, which means refile. I can't. That's the trial by court. On, um, Mr. Johnson's, the docket sheet for his case, it just says that court enters order granting the state's motion to dismiss without objection. That would be action from the defendant's attorney. And let me look at the other two real quickly, just so I can give you a complete answer.
Sure, sorry for, no, maybe I just overlooked that when I, it was just a lot to read. I could have overlooked something.
That one wasn't, I, I know there was one I saw where it specifically said without prejudice. Well, I don't, I don't see it. I know when I looked through everything this afternoon, I saw that there was one notice of without prejudice, but I just can't find it right now.
Okay.
Well, how many cases in Indiana has a fiscal body ever paid criminal defenses for the attorney fees?
I don't know the answer to that. We haven't checked.
Close to zero.
I don't know. I don't know.
It'd be right closer to zero than anything.
Could be, I, I really.
I don't think the council really has a responsibility to do this.
All I can tell you is what the statute says.
And that statute was more protecting against political retaliation than it is for criminal things like this.
Well, again, all I can do is read the language in the statute and it wasn't, it wasn't limited to political retaliation. It was.
That's what it sounds like.
Maybe I could ask a question here. So i- in your opinion, would it be a violation of the Indiana Code to not reimburse, to not fulfill their request?
I, I think the answer is yes. And you would probably, I would assume that these four individuals would probably pursue the county in a civil action to recover based on that statute. I think this would give a civil right of action.
And they go with the state instead because that's who filed it.
Uh, because, excuse me, the statute specifically says the fiscal body of the unit, governmental unit, and that's you guys. So it doesn't say the state. Any other questions?
Got one, the, I had to talk to your colleague, Rick, and concerning the appeal and the timeframe of the prosecutor appealing the ruling of the judge. Is that all been gone through and?
There was a, there was a notation in here about an interlocutory appeal. The court denied the motion to certify that interlocutory appeal. That's, an interlocutory appeal is one that happens while the case is pending, while it's ongoing. So if there's going to be any appeal, it would be filed after the case is concluded. And some of these were just included, just concluded last month, so I really don't know whether there are any appeals pending or not.
Okay. Is there a timeframe on that?
Oh, on criminal, I don't, I haven't done criminal law for about thirty-eight years. So normally it's the defendant that's filing an appeal. And then I think the, it has to be done, I believe, within thirty days. I don't know whether that applies to the state or not, and I don't know whether the state's filed an appeal or not.
Since the state dropped a number of the charges, it would not be human to think they would be appealing.
Right.
Something that they've considered not, enough evidence for them to consider going forward with, so.
In, in, I think two of those cases where the, there was a dismissal, the state had filed a request for that, the judge to approve that interlocutory appeal. That was denied. So then at that point, they dismissed rather than going forward with the trial, so.
Just to double check to make sure the invoices, the paid invoices that we have received, they cover all, everything that we need to have, you know, with, with the, with the bank statements or the, or the checks and all that good stuff.
It's through the end of the, those criminal proceedings. Yes.
Then I guess there has been some investigation into whether our insurance or the bonding would cover. Thought we had some information about that as well.
Came out today.
From Rick.
Is Debbie still here?
Or?
Ron's gonna pull it up.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it. I just got it this morning. If I can get this to work.
The answer is no. Okay. So this was from, from the commissioner's office administrator. According to Rita McConnell, the county had public entity liability insurance as well as directors and officers. However, the coverage does not cover criminal suits or claims. The fact that they were acquitted doesn't change the type of the claim. So. They're saying the, basically they had the insurance, but it doesn't cover the criminal defense.
Okay, and maybe I'm just like way off, but let's just say, for instance, Rob and I are standing up here and I'm leaning over and I accidentally tag him in the face and he says that it, you know, I say it was an accident, but he says that was a, you know, that I assaulted him, for instance. So in that case, you know, would, so that, that would be something that then I have to cover? Or is that something that our, our insurance isn't going to cover that because he would have, he's trying to say that I, that was a, you know, I assaulted him and not a civil, like our insurance, whatever the references.
Yeah, you, it, there could be two claims. There can be a civil assault and a criminal assault.
Okay.
If it was a civil assault, it would have to do with a disfigurement that he might suffer.
Right, but then that would cover, but that would fall under, our insurance would cover that if it was a civil assault, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Although it may, I, I haven't seen the policy. Intentional acts may not be covered. Accidental would be with the insurance, but intentional, maybe not. I just don't know the answer to that question. But then from a criminal standpoint, if you're, if, if this county attorney filed, prosecutor files a criminal charge and you are either acquitted or the case is dismissed, then yes, you're, the defense, your defense costs, you could ask for reimbursement.
I could ask for reimbursement by the?
By the fiscal body.
Okay. So would the presence or, or lack of thereof, of insurance affect the council at all?
Your, if you had insurance or didn't have insurance, it wouldn't affect the responsibility under the statute. You could then go to your insurance carrier and say, hey, we had to pay these out. Now we want to be repaid. But it doesn't sound like that's going to be possible either.
Any other questions? More discussion? Now I need a motion.
Can we do a little more discussion?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. I, I, all, all I know is this, uh, I, I've, I've spoken or gotten opinions from five different attorneys in the last two days. And Greg, you're, you're the fifth one. So, uh, anyway, I mean, it just, it seems like, um, we're in a spot where the receipts or, or the paid invoices, we had the invoices, that we really don't have a choice. And, and I think that's what you're saying. Is that right, Greg? Unless we want to have consequences afterwards if we don't pay this.
The word in the statute is shall reimburse. And, uh, I think the only discretionary issue is whether the charges are reasonable and customarily charged expenses.
Well, I'll make a motion to pay the $243,871.
I'll second it.
Is the public getting a talk? You can correct me if I'm wrong, man. I honestly don't think so because this is, I mean, it's up to the council. As this statute states, the financial body, the fiscal body, excuse me, to make the decision to pay it or not. And, uh, there is nothing about anyone else involved because it's not coming out of anywhere else. And, uh, the appropriation for the, for the services will come out of the rainy day fund. So it doesn't affect any other fiscal entity within the county. So that's my, that's my opinion.
A, a question about this. If it goes farther and we would get sued, that would be more taxpayer money going out to defend us.
You'd have to defend it, yes.
Then we will have to defend it, so.
And when I look at the statute, I think the, the, the focus of any defense like that would be the reasonable and customarily charged fees.
And so then, in, in your opinion on these fees, I mean, two of them are almost identical. I mean, and the other two, you know, are, are, you know, off, are definitely different from those other two fees. I mean, in your opinion, after reviewing these and looking at the, I mean, there was, one of the items submitted did have itemized, uh, charges associated with it. The other three was a lump sum charge for those three. And I didn't know, is in, in your opinion, is that something where you would want to look or review those itemized charges before you would, you know, state that those are reasonable or in customary?
Well, I did look through the, um.
Unless I'm mistaken, I thought only the one had the itemized list on there.
Yeah, I looked through the summary that Mr. Long provided. And, uh, there were, I want to say nine depositions, I think. There were a number of motions filed and objected to and, um, related to subpoenas that were issued. So he itemized not only his services, but the expenses that he had in his office for his office staff. And I think you got those. It's a, it's very detailed.
But the other three don't, don't have that detail. And I think we ought to have that before we make a decision.
I think it might be noteworthy here that the two largest ones went to trial.
No.
No?
Nope. The case that Mr. Long handled did not go to trial. It was, again, dismissed on the state's motion.
No, the two largest amounts, uh, did, did the one for $73,000, did that go to trial?
Uh, it did, yes. That was Mr. Philippi.
And one for $82,900 roughly went to trial?
No.
Marlin Wisight?
No. That was dismissed on the state's motion.
Okay.
We have a motion with our second.
I just was checking to see if the public gets to address this issue.
No, I really do not feel that we should because the fiscal body is making this decision based on statute. And the public will not change what the statute states. Says. Yeah.
There is a time for public comment, right? In your agenda?
In the agenda afterwards, there is time for public comment. So, uh, for those who have signed up for public comment, yes. But I have a motion then by, excuse me. Get back to the right one. Motion by Rob, second by Greg. Any more discussion within the council?
I'd like to make a motion to table too.
Well, we've already got a motion on the floor.
You'd have to get a second for that and then it's non-debatable.
We already have a motion and a second. So. Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay.
And I'd like to make a motion to, oh, sorry.
And I'm opposed where Brad and Rick.
And then, my only concern is I would just like to see the itemized lists from those other two. I mean, we got a detailed list from Mr. Long. The other items, I would like to see a, a detailed breakdown, just so we can allow our attorney to review those items. That's my only concern with that because I don't, I mean, the shall, the shall obligation in the code, I completely agree with that, but I would just at least like to let our attorney review those, those details.
Okay. So what's the motion before payment or?
Yes. Carry forty-two.
Yeah, no, I mean, Brad's, you're making a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to, to table this till next month so we could receive those.
We've already, we're already approved.
Well, okay, I, I want to see those items before. I'd like to carry whatever the proper way, move this forward to next month.
Still ask for that.
Right, I would like to ask for those details from those other invoices. What's the?
Would you like Mr. Gonnerman to check with those?
Yeah, that, that's what I'd like to do, sorry. That's, I'm getting my tongue turned around there.
Yeah, we can do that.
That's all I would, that's all I would like to see.
Okay. Moving down to council business, pigeon township, letter of support.
They asked me to remove that.
Right. Did you get that? Noticed in letter from them, so. We got the, uh, sign sheet. Okay. So just help me if I'm getting anything. So Nancy Woolsey may have left, you said, on machines. Correct me if I get anybody's name wrong. Uh, Debbie Stevens, 11F. And we do, wait, line, everybody, since we do have a long list and we've got other business to get to tonight, then, you know, the three minute limit is involved. State your name, please.
Debbie Stevens, 509 North Second Street, Mobile, Indiana, resident. And, um, I realize that you're in a hard position and that none of you asked for this. But it is a sad day in Warren County when the face, there's a face on every single one of those dollars, a quarter of a million dollars to pay. What I, I view, and I think just about every Warren County resident would view as personal expenses. And they were personally incurred. And Mr. Overton, you are absolutely correct that the, there should not be a claim paid in this county without itemized support for that claim. That should not happen. That's, that's exactly what the form says, itemized claims. So you're correct in asking for that. And I would, you know, encourage all of you to, to make sure that that's received and that you see those charges. Campaign funds can be used also for legal fees. Uh, Dan Saylor, at the beginning of, uh, his campaign filing report for this year had a balance of $57,000. And apparently none of that is being used towards this. Bob Johnson had a balance of $23,000. I don't know what Mr. Fulling Face balance is at this point, but, um, it, I just want to comment that there is a face on every single one of those dollars that's being paid for these personal legal defense fees. And that is a shame. It's a shame that legislators ever allowed for such a thing. It's a shame that you've been put in this position. But it's really sad for the, every single family in this county who struggles with paying their center point bill this month or choosing between buying groceries or buying medicine. And, um, that's it. Thank you for hearing me out. I'm sure your hearts are the same towards this situation.
Just got, thank you.
I think it's April Edwards. Is that next? Were you on, she, okay, thank you.
April Edwards. I, I understand that you guys are in a difficult situation as well. And with all due respect to Attorney Meyer, um, I strongly disagree with him. I spent quite a bit of time researching this issue because I think it's important for our county. I think it's important to our taxpayers where this money comes, goes and where it comes from. And it is accounted for and we have fiscal responsibility. And I admire Mr. Overton and Mr. Reed for recognizing that there should have been some caution with respect to this. What I can tell you is contrary to what much of the public thinks in this county, Terry Philippi, Dan Saylor, Robert Johnson, and Marlon Wisight were not prosecuted based upon any complaint made by any person in this county. All of their charges arose from the Indiana State Police investigating the charges against Danielle Barnes. And it, it is of their own accord that they got themselves into their, these criminal prosecutions. And with respect to Mr. Wisight, he wasn't even an employee at the time. He took money and applied for money as soon as he was hired as an employee, approved by Dr. Jaeger. He applied and got backdated money for a time period that he was an independent contractor and took a paycheck before he, on the, under payroll for money, when he wasn't working for the health department, read the probable cause affidavit. And he used, without authorization, Dr. Jaeger's signature stamp to give to obtain those monies. And so all of these charges that they brought, they brought upon themselves. And I know that Mr. Meyer doesn't do criminal defense, but I do and have for years. I know a lot of criminal defense attorneys. And there's a lot of people that are guilty of carings they're charged with, but they don't end up with a, with conviction. And a lot of, because of their, they lack, lack of criminal history, um, that the money gets paid back. I have a transcript right here from when Mayor Marlin Wisight's deal was entered. And the special prosecutor had offered him this months before. But Mr. Long wanted to continue to bill and run up fees so he could make more money. And it's right here. She's, she explained why that she didn't pursue the charges any further against Mr. Wisight. She said it was because he had no felony felony. The money was paid, ultimately paid back into the health department fund and in the interest of judicial economy. And all three of those cases, except for Mr. Philippi, were dismissed without prejudice on a deferral agreement. Same with Danielle Barnes. Those were all deferral agreements. That happens every day in our business, in this, in our, in the criminal legal world. And the statute says that you have to be, you have to be charged with something within the official scope of your duties. There is no Indiana reported case that has ever had a fiscal body like yourself reimburse people for criminal defense attorney's fees. That has never happened in the state of Indiana until tonight. And the reported cases I looked at, there were two reported cases. One, neither one of them directly deal with this statute, but one involved the, uh, there's the State of Indiana versus T. Eric Evans, eight, ten, Northeastern Second, three, thirty-six, Indiana Supreme Court, two thousand and four, and Clinton County Board of Commissioners versus Jacqueline Clements, nine, forty-five, Northeastern Second, seven, twenty-one, Indiana Appeals, two thousand and eleven. In the Clements case, which involved a civil case, okay? And it involved the Board of Commissioners going after a former auditor for the purchase of some software that they later found out was going to cost more money than they thought it was. And ultimately, she was, she was, she was a discretionary function. And that, and her actions were approved by both the, the county fiscal body, but the, and the Board of Commissioners. And later, her case, the case was dismissed against her and they said, you know, this is a civil case and she should be reimbursed for attorney's fees. And the criminal, and there, those, and it wasn't reimbursed. So the actions that gave rise to these criminal charges for these elected officials or, or for the independent contractor, and a independent contractor, and the statute doesn't say anything about reimbursing legal fees for independent contractors. Marlin Wisight, uh, requires it to be within your official scope of your duties. This was not within their discretionary official scope of their duties. There is case law out there. In addition.
Your three minutes are way past.
I have a couple, two more important things, but I'll make them fast.
Make them fast.
Criminal defense attorney's fees for a level six felony with no prior criminal background cost anywhere from $3,000 to $20,000. And under Mr. Long's, that you awarded him $33,000 of fees, expenses, I mean. You, you just gave him money for expenses for his paralegals, another attorney his son, uh, and a bunch of other expenses. Those aren't legal expenses. Filing fees are legal expenses, copying costs, research fees. So you guys just awarded these people all of this money that would have never been compensable under the law. And it's very unfortunate because what has happened in this county is the good people that are honest and report things accordingly, including the state police. Ultimately, there's a million reasons why things are dismissed. And those three cases were on deferrals and they were dismissed without prejudice, which means if additional information came to light, they could come back and litigate those. So it's a, it's a sad day when good people work hard to bring, to bring matters to justice and fruition. And they are blamed for it. That is the reason there are so many good people that will not stop forward, step forward anymore and try to correct the wrongs that we see in this county.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Ed Anderson.
Thank you very much. I'm here speaking as a taxpayer. I gotta say, I was shocked when I heard that we had a $240,000 legal fee. We were going to have to discuss tonight at this council meeting. Unbelievable to me. And it's particularly unbelievable because I understand that Mr. Long was the guy to kind of put this whole package together. And probably all of you can remember when he first got involved representing Marlon Wisight, he talked several times publicly, he wasn't going to charge any fees for his services. Then he comes up with an $82,000 bill. And he got the other attorneys involved and they cranked out their bills as well. And I applaud Brad for asking for details on those bills. I've seen the bills. It's just a high level invoice that they just cranked out. I know I could tell by the looks on your face, some of you are really struggling with this. And I appreciate that. But this is a big deal. We don't have this kind of money. You just spent a quarter million dollars of our county taxpayers' money in a situation where you really didn't have all the facts. And I don't think legally we were getting the best advice either. Sorry, but that's what I understand. There's more to that statute than what was discussed tonight. So I got my frustrations out. Uh, it is what it is, but it's not a good situation. It's not a good, good look for you guys running for reelection next year when people find out what happened.
Is that a threat?
All right, thank you.
Okay, next I have Anthony Long. He's gone. And Andrew Skinner.
He's gone.
He's gone. Okay.
I have one comment. Taxpayer money we're concerned about. And avoiding another lawsuit is saving us money.
You have plenty of lawsuits coming or no chance to comply.
That's all.
That's all?
That's all.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
My Greg, second by Rob. All in favor? Thirty-six, zero. I know.
We got the budget.
We have, we have the budget session.
Budget session, twenty-second.
Recess for a minute?
No.
Oh, we gotta do it right now? Yeah, we're doing it.
Oh, I didn't, oh.
Christine doesn't want to come back.
We're not finished.
We're not finished.